Plenary 12, please rise for the pledge of our allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to turn over the exit review to Catherine.
Thank you, Mr. Paul Messino. It's my pleasure to introduce to you the remaining two members of our Cognia accreditation review team. We had six individuals from across the country come and spend time with us over the last three days. They flew in on Sunday night and drove in on Sunday night. They've spent time talking to leadership teams, to parents, to students. They've observed, I believe it was sixty-four odd classrooms, to accrue a ton of data that they've now synthesized and are going to share out in a report with you. The team is led by Dr. Nancy Golson. Nancy comes to us from, she's been a lead evaluator with Cognia, formerly Advanced Ed for numerous years. She's a retired school leader in a lot of different roles. She has been a special education director, a curriculum director, an elementary principal, a professor, and basically an Advanced Ed or Cognia guru. I think she's a school improvement aficionado officially at this point. And also Mrs. Brenda Young. And Mrs. Brenda Young has come to us from Wichita, Kansas. She's currently a middle school principal at Circle Middle School. She is a former science teacher. She has been a former associate principal, athletic director, MTSS coordinator. And so their expertise, along with the expertise of their team, really gave us a comprehensive perspective of what our school district is doing well and some areas for improvement, I imagine we'll hear as well. They both worked in several states, maybe even different countries, and I think this is probably the coldest one. So we have that going for us. So I'd like to welcome to the microphone Dr. Golson and Mrs. Young.
Thank you, Catherine. It has been a pleasure to be here. And yes, this is the coldest I've ever seen. From Alabama, you're just not used to this kind of temperature or weather, but it's been fascinating. I could hardly go to sleep last night for watching what a blizzard looks like. But thank you for letting us come. The rest of the team regretted not being able to be here with us late this afternoon. But when they opened the interstates at two o'clock, they said, "We're out of here." And certainly that was the right, safe decision to make. So a little bit about Cognia and what we've done over this few days. Cognia Knows Schools. And Cognia is a nonprofit organization that serves actually over thirty countries and three hundred, wait, let me get my figures right, three hundred and thirty-three thousand schools and school systems. Why do you want to be accredited? So you can build the capacity of your schools and school systems. Because we do come in and do such a comprehensive study of your schools. We help you on your journey. It also is a way of saying to colleges, "Our students are in schools that are rigorous." So what has been our job? Our job is to evaluate your institution based on the standards that Cognia has recognized occur in high-performing schools. And how do we do that? We talk to lots of people. We review lots of documents. And we observe in your classes. And we'll give you all that data in just a minute. And then we prepare for you a very extensive document. It'll be about a thirty or forty-page document that you will receive in a couple of weeks. So who were these people we talked to? We talked to seven board members. We talked to a hundred and thirteen students. We talked to a hundred and forty-one teachers and staff members. We talked to eighteen parents and community partners, sixteen district staff, one superintendent, and twenty-six principals and assistant principals. That turns out to be over three hundred people that we talked to in forty-five-minute sessions. We got some fun answers that I'm going to share with you. We did sixty-four twenty-minute observations, looking at the different environments in the classroom, looking at student engagement, looking at the support teachers give students, looking at digital learning, looking at well-behaved students, how students are behaving, looking at how that classroom really functions. Do y'all need to move so you can see? All right. What did we see in our observations? Supportive learning environments came through loud and clear in our observations. And I think that is a result of your very dedicated teachers. I think it is also the result of your higher reliable schools in your safe and orderly, safe environments from that work. The two particular areas that really did come out loud and clear was that learners have equal access to classroom discussions, activities, resources, technology, and support. There are no children that are being left behind. Teachers have activities planned for every child in the classroom. And we saw the needs of classes all up and down the way, and yet teachers had planned for those children. We also saw a respect in the way that children are treated. Learners are treated in a fair, clear, and consistent manner. And I think congratulations for those areas of things that we saw in our observations. And then we see some areas that you want to work on on your growth from our observations. We saw some digital work. But what we encourage you to look at as you move forward is students using their technology in communication and working collaboratively for learning. What we saw was children using their devices one-on-one and didn't even know there was a child next door. And we encourage teachers to begin to explore opportunities to let children work together and incorporating their technology in that learning. Then, for some reason, and never really sure, children could not explain to us exactly how their work was going to be assessed. Sometimes they would say, "Hmm, the teacher takes it up. Well, how does she grade it? Hmm, I don't know." What we didn't see was a lot of rubrics, a lot of letting students know ahead of time how you can make a good grade. And we encourage, again, as you explore opportunities, to determine how to help children be part of, "How do I reach my academic goals?" But I, we couldn't resist taking pictures. So I want to show you some of the things. What we found in Grand Forks Public School. We found people working on their stretch goals. We found kids collaborating. And I mean, you just wonder what this boy was explaining. Again, these students were at a desk, but they were working independently on an activity, but technology included. This was one of the interesting statements we heard from a high school senior. He said, "What's different this year?" And he said, "Things have really tightened up here. We have to put tops on our drinks that we have in the classroom since this safety thing's happening." And we're going, "You know, that makes a whole lot of sense." That as we look at safety and what is in a safe environment for students, you should be putting the lid on your drink that you have in the classroom. But that's the exact kind of thing that you're looking for. Again, students working with technology, student leaders being recognized. Your halls, I've never seen halls so well-used. There are tables and desks all over the halls with students in small groups, an extra little bit of learning, students being on a project, students working some way collaboratively with a para-pro in the halls. Halls are being used. You're using your space. This just kind of touched our hearts, the diplomacy they have out on the base that children can put a card up on who is their parent that is deployed, a family member. A PE activity that students were working on. This classroom was working on, here's the storm coming, what kind of jobs would people be involved in looking at the storm and getting ready for the storm and exploring careers as they were preparing for the storm yesterday. And then we're all in this together. We just thought that was a great statement of something that we saw on a bulletin board. A reading center, inviting reading center, that got in there twice. The books we've read. A first-grade classroom is so full of materials and supplies. And this was fascinating, to make children feel part of the school. Every child, every employee in the school is part of one of four houses. And it's all mixed up. You could have a kindergartner and a fifth grader, obviously, in the same house. And they frequently meet by house, but they're a family by house, and develop that collaboration and that feeling of ownership and teamship and being part of a group. This you can't see, but this was fascinating. Went in a class yesterday, and immediately one of the people, adults, came over to me and said, "You need to get a desk, a seat quickly because we're fixing to turn the lights out." And I'm thinking, "Oh, my goodness, you're turning the lights out in a middle school?" And that's what they told me, right? I was in Joel's school. And the teacher had developed a review math lesson, having a big quiz today. But the student's worksheet was highlighted with an iridescent pen. And the children had an iridescent marker. And so they then were doing their work with only black light, but they could see their work because the pen was iridescent. And she let them explore the, what they could see, and their shoes looked interesting, and the white colors were interesting. And then they got to work. But what a great motivational way to get kids to do a routine math worksheet. I had to choose this one. "Don't have a meltdown. Keep you cool," as they were working on, again, relationships. And being from Alabama, I've never seen a snowbank this big, so I just had to put that one in. And this one I thought you'd be impressed with. PLC is not an event. It's our lives. And I think that's the way a lot of the elementary teachers feel about it. They look forward to that early-out afternoon. They look forward to collaborating with their peers and asking those four questions and preparing their lessons. This was an interesting one. In case you have not been told today, "Good morning. You're doing great. You're brave." And that was right in the front door. What an excellent way to greet a child every morning. Again, kids working together. You see kids, some sitting on the floor, some sitting in chairs. We've seen beanbags. We've seen kids with knee pads, just whatever they can do best as long as they stayed on task. This was in a STEM class, using robotics to make the path so that the little robot could go through all of those little barriers on the pad. If you haven't seen that, you need to get out to these schools and see it. The ICANN wall, what can you do as you stretch? Innovative hours. The messaging is there. This was a math lesson in a first-grade class in which the teacher was letting her standards be known. She was dividing up the class. She had differentiation going on. All the components that need to be there for an outstanding lesson. And then we could not not conclude this one because as much as I've seen many of those different pieces, the devices, I've lived through the computer age, I've never seen them all put together across the hall, so I loved that shot. But that's what's happening out there in your school. And it's those sixty-four observations. That's a glimpse of what we've seen. So what are our general findings of what we've seen in our school system and what are we recommending? Our recommendations come in the order of a theme. Put all of this together. And what are the themes that we have seen, the big pictures we've seen, in Grand Forks Public School? The first thing we've seen is a tremendous difference in your school system as you've become a HRS Level One certification. Teachers talk about safety. Teachers are talking about being proud of each other and welcoming students and making sure they have emergency kits available, making sure they know what to do in a certain situation, making every kid feel valuable. That is clearly permeated throughout this system. I have notes here, and I want to be sure I'm including everything. The second thing is your forward-thinking superintendent. In a year and a half, what we see is he's established the Teacher Advisory Council. And when a teacher would start telling us about, "I'm on the Teacher Advisory Council." I get to take the concerns of my peers or the questions of my peers and sit with the superintendent and talk with him is valuable. He's reorganized the cabinet, realigning and working on district positions for a more highly efficient and effective work group around here. His weekly communications, people are very aware of that. And we even had a teacher saying, "I now send out a weekly video to my parents because Dr. Brenner sends it out to us, and it meant so much." That modeling that's taking place, that's just rolling out good things for kids. He's now working on the strategic plan. He's working on the facilities plan. The, we met a child who gets to ride a bus because of the transition her life is in. And she's going to have no way to get to school, her regular school, because she's been replaced if she didn't have a bus that would come and pick her up. What a difference that makes. Restructuring the curriculum and technologies department so that there are instructional coaches out there. They're making a difference already in one semester. So the whole, lots of forward-thinking that's coming from the superintendent's office. The next thing that we saw is what's going on with mental health and relationship efforts. As recognized by so many, many people and many of your partners, and the school system then taking a lead to try to provide support for young people who need help with mental health. And that whole program is amazing, where it is the website for the hub or if it's the training that they, teachers and people have received on trauma-sensitive and compassion, mental health staff, SROs in the school. It goes on and on. So many things are clear, but they are making a difference in the way that child is growing up in that environment that child is growing up in Grand Forks Public School. The next thing we saw was a tremendous gift of partners that you have received. That is amazing, that the community of Grand Forks sees themselves as being part of the solution to make sure that every child receives a proper education with the support they deserve. It was truly an honor to talk to some of those. And then there are a lot of school systems who say, "We need to solve problems." And they try to figure out, and they spend a lot trying to figure out how to solve them. What I like about this school system and the team supported so strongly is you have hired the very best of the best for consultants to come in on specific topics that you need help with, where it is the demographer or Dr. Phil or adult education or using the hospital, Ulta, whatever, Ulta, whoever it is, using those experts to come in and help you with that specific task and working through groups is to be complimented. This is not new, but certainly one of the things that we saw is we really, as a district, and I do say "we" because after the team's been here for this many days, we feel part of you. So we need to get the facilities and the finances in order. And you're doing that. You've got the steps in place. But obviously, you've got to continue that effort and get their facilities and get your finances so that you can afford to upgrade those facilities appropriately. And whoops. The last one is not popping up. Okay. The last one is, there is a little bit of disconnect between the schools and the district. And so we've talked to your key leadership on how you need to inspect and monitor what you're expecting principals to do out in the schools and teachers to do out in the schools. And I think we have talked about that in depth, and certainly they understand. It's just like the junior high school kids when you tell them to go clean their room. If you don't go up and check on it, they're not going to do a very good job. And so we need to be sure that when we send out a parameter or something that we expect to happen in the schools, that we then go and inspect and be sure that it's happening. So those are the themes that we have recognized. I have ten days to write that long report, Dr. Brenner. Some of that I may be writing tonight. Then I have to send it in, and it is read by two different readers. One is with Cognia. One actually is a grammar guru who makes sure that I've put in all the periods and commas. And then you will receive in about thirty days a rating on each one of the standards, each one of the key indicators. You'll receive a rating on each one of the areas of the environments that we have observed. You will also get an index of education quality. I think it's wonderful that we include that because it tells you where you are on that continuum of improvement. And we have not tabulated everything, but you certainly have done a lovely job. And then you receive a very long description narrative of those six themes that I talked about. That will be included in all of that and will come to you in about thirty days. It will come to Dr. Brenner, and I'm sure he will be putting copies out for anyone to read. If there are questions, you may not have my number, but I guarantee you Catherine and Joel will have my phone number. But if you have questions about Cognia and what they do, your director for this part of the country is Nancy Bowles. Cognia believes that knowledge of where you are and what's going on is an opportunity for continued growth. And that is our objective. That's why we've been here. It has certainly been our privilege to be here and to get to know all these wonderful people. A lot of them in the back of me. And we appreciate the wonderful hospitality. Just, it's been fabulous. We have thoroughly enjoyed getting to know everybody and having such a great place to visit. Thank you so much.
Any board members have any questions?
No question, but I just want to thank you on behalf of the board for, you know, I'm in the healthcare industry, and so we get lots of regulators in on a regular basis. But the job is to, for them, is to make things so it's better for the patients. And for you, it's, your job is to make it so the students are in a better place, and I appreciate that. But I also want to thank not only the people behind you, but the seven hundred other-plus people that are out doing their jobs right now because this is a reflection of what they do and what they've done and their dedication. So thank you.
I did have one question with regard to the stand, the assessment that you talked about. When you said that you thought that students needed to better articulate their learning goals and what they learned, was that across K through twelve? Was there, was there a certain level that was stronger? Or can you comment on that, please?
I think what comes into play is you have elementaries that are standards-based, and they can articulate better what standard they're learning in the ICANN statements. When you cross that great divide over to secondary, it becomes power school. It becomes A, B, C, D, F. And so you're working on the parameters of what a one, two, three, four means for your standards. But what does an A mean? What does a B mean? It's a percentage. But when you ask, "How are you being evaluated on a project? How are you being assessed? Can you, can you regurgitate that part?" We didn't hear that as much in the secondary level as we did absolutely in the elementary.
Thank you. That helps. And then I had one other question, and that was the standards that were mentioned. We must be seeing those standards at some point, maybe with the written report? Yeah, okay. Yeah, thank you. That...
Just a follow-up to that. So I always like to ask, you know, we do something, so what? You know, so how do we... You know, so how do we follow up with this process? So, my first question would be, the standards, are, what kind of standards are we graded against, or is it sort of this national standard that's created by Cognia, or are we standardized against other schools? And then the second part of my question is, so we received the report, what is the expectation of what's done with it, then?
Okay. The first part is, you do get the, what's the national average across all the schools and school systems all over the world that we evaluate? So, you do get a, that score, that IQ score we talked about, does compare you with everybody else. But the written report compares you against the standards, those three areas of learning, leadership, and resources, which have been identified as the main part of what you do. I mean, that covers the whole gamut. And what we're looking at for you to do with that information is, how do you improve on your journey? Cognia recognizes that every school and every school district is at a different place in their improvement journey. And so, we rate every part of this, looking at, are there some of the district? Are there most of the district? Is there all of the district involved in each one of the pieces that we look at? So that you will be judged in how involved the district is in every individual piece. You're not compared to the other people, it is what your district is doing within the district. That's why it was so important to us, as we set up the schedule with Mr. Thompson, so that we talked to every school. We were only able to go to nine, but we talked to the leadership team in all the other nine so that we could get a pulse of what was happening. And we hope over the next five years, that this is used to guide your school improvement, your system improvement plan. And as we talked to Dr. Brenner and to Mr. Thompson, and I'm not even going to try to say your last name, Catherine, but to Catherine, it will be part of, you'll see all the things that we've mentioned today, I think, becoming part of your strategic plan, because we're all after the exact same thing. And what Cognia wishes is that you will use that as you get better.
So, is it Cognia's role, or part of Cognia's role, then, to have follow-up conversations or call us back in a year and say, "How are you doing?"
Five years, five years, right. Now, had you been a low-performing school, you would have another visit, you could, two years from now, or a year from now, depending on, and I've done those. And it's a sad situation when you see children in those environments. But Cognia is, you're granted accreditation for five years, that's the longest anyone gets, and so you will...
So, you're already giving us the gold stamp?
Yeah, you're, my guess is that you will be at that level, because we know your preliminary Any other questions?
I just have an additional thanks. You know, you mentioned kind of the people behind the scenes, and we had a district-wide leadership team who helped prepare some of the minutia for the Cognia visit, so I just wanted to send a shout-out to Jess Erickson, Dr. David Saxburg, Leslie Wiggent, Missy Medema, Joel Schlecker, Jody Thompson, he's the detail man. I think one of the most detailed visits you've ever had is what I've heard there, which is a good thing. Carrie Meland, Amy Barch, Brenda Duksher, and Amy Rolk, and Amy really helped us with the technology and the uploading of all the documents and the evidences for them to see, so she went above and beyond in her work as well. So, I just wanted to thank that team of people, put in some extra time.
If I could have just one concluding comment. Again, thank you to our guests for leading us through this process, and to Board Member Flynn's question, this will be, the recommendations will be integrated into our strategic plan, you know, under the bucket of academics, specifically where we're targeting either innovation, engagement, creativity, those types of things. That's where you'll see that, so there'll be accountability. None of this is for naught, and we take all of this very seriously. I too want to thank all of my colleagues for the work that they've done in preparation. This has been a really busy week. I look at Dr. Schlecker and Brian Low back there, they had to prepare for the public forum at South on Monday night, and then we had this today, and we had a little weather, you know, interruption here this morning as well. So, I do want to thank everybody, and to Mr. Thompson, Ms. Galach, for their outstanding leadership in all of this. So, thank you, and thank you to the board for supporting this, because there are finances that are involved when we bring in a visitation team, and these folks were taken very well care of as a result of your support. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, at this time, we're going to take a 10-minute break while we get ready for the last half of our meeting. Okay? Thank you very much.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Chris Arnold, Director of Buildings and Grounds. So kind of maybe give a little bit more information to what Terry spoke to. We tested multiple schools. We actually started back in November and we started out at Twining, which is out at the Grand Forks Air Force Base. That test, which can be found along with all the other tests, Gina, if you wanna, we can kind of pull that up. So this is Gina, our safety coordinator. She's absolutely awesome. She's kind of here to help me. She's been helping me along with all this because this has just been an immense amount of data. All of these reports that we have so far have been posted directly to our webpage. I'm sure most of you have seen them, so if you have any questions or want to see more, want to compare reports, all of that is available to you there. But initially, we started off at Twining at the beginning of November, and that was due to those wet conditions. From there, once we got those reports back, we moved on to the middle schools, Schrader and Valley, and then we began to pick off elementary schools. And West was supposed to have occurred in December. We had a snowstorm. January, we had a snowstorm. And then we made it into February second, third is when we actually finally got West tested. I received this report in particular last week on Tuesday. The inspection date was actually on the 28th of January. Sorry, I'll go right off of his report that he gave us. So Gina, if you want to jump to that report, the reason why West is of so much concern is because of some key results that we found in this report. If you want to delve more into pictures and summarizations of findings and stuff, you can read the first, so many pages there, I want to say it's like the first 12 pages are pretty much his recommendations, kind of talking about the report. Starting on page 11 is actually, it's the appendix section of this report. We did approximately 10 air tests throughout the building. And then we did a number of lift tests. We did three of them in different locations in the building where we actually had visible mold. So going to page 13, is that where you're at, Gina? Looks like you are. We can see the classrooms 10, eight and two, which would be the north wing of West. Those values came in at 147, 47 and 74. And we are looking at the total fungi count and we are looking at the count per meter cubed. And the reason why we look at that number is because they're taking a very small sample and they're expounding it upon a cubic mass of air. So they're just taking a volume and making it maybe a little bit more tangible to what we can relate to. Because when you see the number eight, it's, doesn't really, I don't know, I guess it doesn't really mean anything profound. So they kind of are able to expound upon that. Now typically, those total fungi count, we like to see those below 2,000. We are well below that value in those classrooms. Those classrooms are safe places. We can go to the next page, Gina. On this page, we have the north hallway, second floor hallway and the lunchroom. We have results of 180, 167 and 40. Again, those numbers are below our 2,000 threshold. The area of concern now, start on page 15, and that would be when we get to the library, the tunnel near classroom two and the tunnel near classroom eight. You will notice that we have one at 737, which we begin to start to consider that's an elevated value. And then we started getting into the 23,000s, the 20,000s. These are extremely high levels of mold. Moving on to our lift tests. We have medium results from the lift tests from the crawl spaces, so that's going to be these first two tests. The one type of mold that we particularly are concerned about is that stratum, well, how do you say it, Eric?
Stacky boytrus.
There we go, that's right. You listen, that's exactly what that guy said. Anyways, all joking aside, that is what we refer to as black mold. And the area that we really start to see a concern is when we go down to the library, which is on our very last page, we have a high lift test and that's right below a window. Any questions? Okay, with, oh, yes, Amber.
Can you talk about why the inspection process was initiated? And was this, was each building a full inspection? Like you buy a home, you get a full home inspection? Or was it just for the purpose of testing after the wet conditions?
So the wet conditions, really, like I said, we started off at Twining. And what we've had going on at Twining, many of you may or may not know this. We have had continuous wet conditions in the crawl spaces at Twining. We have spent money installing drain tile, sump baskets, new guttering systems, just about anything and everything you can think of, we have tried at that building. And it's, in particular, it's the north wing of that building that kind of heads east-west. That particular addition drops down in elevation, probably three or four feet from the original foundation elevation. In doing so, we obviously get a lot more groundwater. We have had continuous wet conditions there. With that, clearly, we started to wonder a little bit, maybe we have something else going on down here. I talked to Stematic, who we had kind of been having conversations on and off as to how do we clean up this space? And his recommendation was to contact Nordic Environmental and go from there. When those results came back and we saw elevated levels, that's what kind of initiated, that kind of perked my ears a little bit. When I find something, I kind of started to dig. And Terry's well aware of this, once I kind of find a path, I start to follow it. And as we began to lift up rocks, I want to say of those eight schools we tested, five have varying amounts of mold. Some are in a very early stage. Some are obviously in a much more progressive stage where we're going to have to do a very aggressive remediation.
How are the order of the buildings determined?
It really went off of how much water we had in them this fall. So Schrader in particular, we really struggled to get dry. Valley, we also struggled to get dry. The elementary, really, there was no order to them. It was just more or less, as we got Lars here, it was like, okay, here's what we have for a window. How many schools can we test? And we just started picking off buildings as fast as we could. So there was really no rhyme or reason.
Okay. And then the process of him testing, is it, like, did he go to certain areas of the building? And is there like a swab that's taken? Is there like visual evidence too? Like obviously, there's pictures.
Yep, absolutely, yeah. So each report, so when you go online, each of these schools has a report much like this. They have a summarization page. They have lots of pictures to show what he visually saw. And when he would visually see something that he would suspect to be mold, he would do a lift test in that area. Some of the schools had multiple lift tests where Valley or West in particular had three lift tests because that's all he kind of saw. And we kind of surmise that all of the tunnels at West likely have that. And that's just in that north addition. Now, the air testing was a little bit more subjective. We kind of went off of points in the building where we either thought were closest to where we had saw mold. So we would do an air test of the occupied space above that. We'd also do an air test of the area where we'd find the mold inside the crawl space. And then we'd also go do a test in an area where we least thought that we would have mold at.
Okay. So I understand that the testing for the mold gets sent to the lab. How do you do the air tests? Is there like a machine that's used?
Yeah, and Gina can speak to that, but I don't know if he has any pictures of it. But the actual piece of equipment, I believe, is from this environmental analysis associates. It's this air Ocel product. But yeah, he's got his specialized piece of equipment he uses. He also takes the temperature, the humidity. He does multiple readings as he goes through those spaces.
I have a couple other questions that might be more for district administration, but a comment. As a Realtor, we use different home inspectors. He's not in the area, but the company I work for works with Lars a lot in Fargo. And I fully trust their company's opinion. I think sometimes there's a perception that, you know, we can pick and choose who we want to slant a certain way. But home inspectors in general or building inspectors, one are supposed to be a very neutral party. But I am aware that Nordic inspection is one of the best, especially in the Fargo area of how I know him. So just a comment, I believe that he does a very, very thorough job, to the point that some people don't like him being used as he's inspecting their home. Because he finds a lot of stuff. My next question, so I have two questions, which I'll ask of you, Chris, to answer after this. But I guess my question would be, is it appropriate to do remediation now versus like after the rain? So I'll just ask that. Like, you know, we're talking about possibly moving, like if the air quality is okay now and we're not disrupting anything, if the snow is melting, I said rain, but if the snow is melting in the spring and it may cause more, and we're already doing remediation, is it appropriate to start that process now or just wait till the school year is done?
So the remediation that we're going to be doing is mainly from paper surfaces, so drywall backing of insulation. Once we remove those surfaces, our plan would obviously be to try to get control of the moisture to figure out how it's getting into the space so that we don't have it regrow before we reinstall. So remediation would be different than the installation. And those two pieces kind of have to fall in together. I have to get it obviously all cleared first before I can bring in a contractor to begin to establish, okay, what needs to be rebuilt. In fact, I can't even really get a contractor price to replace because I don't know exactly how many square feet of pipe I'm going to need to take out, how many square feet of wall I'm going to have to take down to expose all of the mold. It's kind of, we're waiting for one before the other. Does that answer that?
No. So my question is basically, so you go in, you remove all this stuff. The snow melts, there's water pouring in. Is it, is it your hope that you would not make anything new? You know, put new drywall back up or anything before the snow starts to melt?
Right. We need to figure out how the water's getting into the building. And that's, that's where, and we've identified a couple of potential areas how it's getting in. And those are going to require, that's going to be part of that reinstallation process to go through and make sure we fix the parking lot so the parking lot doesn't backgrade into the building in a couple of spots. To find out how is the water getting into the tunnels? Is it a steam leak? Is it a condensate line leak? Is it groundwater? Do we need to put a sump basket down there?
So is the concern that if we wait till the end of the school year, by the time that you take everything apart, you assess, you get bids to, you know, do the work or bypass the bids or whatever, that then when the work is being done, we might be on a tight timeline?
We're going to be on an extremely tight timeline. And you know, the reason why I am very concerned about West is because we've already had people complain about health at that school that we've talked about prior to this meeting.
But the air quality is safe?
Right, right. But we have an air quality that's in that tunnel that is very elevated. And we've also got a library that is elevated. In fact, we will be closing off the library today and working on that tomorrow with, with the staff.
I just want to make sure I understand what you said a little while ago. So, and I understand this is just to declare an emergency for remediation for West. Is it correct to say that remediation has to occur in some of the other schools, but you don't need an emergency declared for that and that'll be handled either internally or with your budget or something like that?
I was actually thinking we'd want to do an emergency for all the remediation and re-insulation of those particular things.
All schools?
Yes. Sorry if that's.
So it would be helpful to put it in a bulk package, basically, that we get one contractor to do all the work?
Either one or I'll get two. In fact, I'll probably end up with two because there's so much work that I don't, one contractor actually is going to struggle to get all of it done in one summer.
Is there a concern as you start to work as well that there's going to be some asbestos issues that we need to mitigate?
West, we will be good because West was gutted. I've got their abatement plan actually in my office already, and they abated all of the lower level and actually went into the crawl space as well.
Okay. Any concerns with the other schools?
No, because all of the garden levels were actually gutted. In fact, Lewis and Clark, I just pulled that print up the other day, and that was from the remediation of ACM, so asbestos containing materials. And they went through all the lower levels of that building. So they did a really good job of going through on those lower levels and eliminating that hazard for us.
Even on like piping and insulation and stuff like that?
Yes, correct.
So my question for district admin, because I think the natural thing is, you know, how have parents been notified or is my kid in an unsafe building? And I'm aware that there's been a communication to parents throughout this whole process after buildings are inspected and then, you know, messaging. Can you just say what that communication has been?
That communication has, is going out now, correct, during, during this conversation, miss gents? So there's been a communication that's going through Blackboard Connect, so parents are receiving it during this conversation.
But for all of the inspection? So like, I'm aware as a Kelly parent, we received a text message that said, your building was inspected. There was levels of this or there wasn't levels of this found, but it's completely safe. Like, how has that been for every school?
That has happened at every building. That's been our, really, it's, we've gotten the report and usually within a week and sometimes sooner, sometimes it's maybe a couple days longer. But we've gotten that report turned around. We'd like to have our remediation plan kind of in place so that when we tell people about it, we can obviously, we know we have a problem. Here's our solution, and then here's what's going to happen, you know, going forward with that, so.
That's a question, then. We'll do like the politics and I'll defer to you. I just want to make sure I understand. So with West, we're talking about because of the extensiveness, it's easier to empty the school and do it. But the remediation it has to do in the other schools can either be done with minimal disruption or no disruption. So those schools don't have to be emptied out. They, you can work around the educational aspects of the school.
Yeah, and the levels that we found are far less than what the report you just saw. I mean, far less. When I say that 2,000 is kind of the benchmark. I think we had one site, and that was Century, that just barely.
after buildings are inspected and then, you know, messaging. Can you just say what that communication has been?
That communication has, is going out now, correct? During, during this conversation, Miss Gents? So there's been a communication that's going through Blackboard Connect. So parents are receiving it during this conversation.
But for all of the inspection? So like, I'm aware as a Kelly parent, we received a text message that said, your building was inspected, there was levels of this or there wasn't levels of this found, but it's completely safe. Like, how has that been for every school?
That has happened at every building. That's been our, our, really it's, we've gotten the report and usually within a week. And sometimes sooner, sometimes it's maybe a couple of days longer. But we've gotten that report turned around. We'd like to have our remediation plan kind of in place so that when we tell people about it, we can obviously, we know we have a problem. Here's our solution and then here's what's going to happen, you know, going forward with that, so.
Oh, that's a question, then we'll do like the politics and I'll defer to you. I just want to make sure I understand. So, so with Wes, we're talking about because of the extensiveness, it's easier to empty the school and, and do it. But the remediation that has to do in the other schools can either be done with minimal disruptive disruption or no disruption. So those schools don't have to be emptied out. They, they, you can work around the educational aspects of the school.
Yeah, and the levels that we found are far less than what the report you just saw. I mean, far less. When I say that 2,000 is kind of the benchmark. I think we had one site, and that was Century, that just barely got over that threshold in one area. But every other school was much, much lower numbers. So we were able to actually do a product with Stematic that we're able to spray onto the piping that'll neutralize the existing mold. It doesn't prevent new mold, but it just helps keep that old mold from growing.
So I'm just going to address the elephant in the room, which is the fact that Wes has been a hot topic lately. And I, as a board member, would like to say that I sincerely believe that this is not some sort of administrative trickery or anything trying to give another excuse to get students out of Wes. But I think that that perception's still going to be there slightly. And I think, you know, it doesn't help that this meeting was kind of called last minute, that Wes isn't outlined on the agenda. Those kinds of things, parents will pick up on and say, this feels like we didn't get a chance to be around or have a conversation before these decisions are being made. And I don't think that that's something that's happening. So I, I kind of wanted to put that out there to give people a chance to, to say something about that. But I do think that they do clearly need a message of this is why we can't wait until May. This is why we can't wait for three months. And so if we can kind of tighten that up so that I have something to come back to parents with and say, this is exactly why we can't wait till May. I think that will be very helpful for me because certainly I don't want risk of health. I don't want risk of taxpayer dollars having to be increased and even more damage done to that school because we do wait. But I was just putting that out there.
I'd love to respond to that with an emphatic, no, no. There is, there is no conspiracy theory. There's no undermining, there's no perspective that because Wes was kept open, we're going to find another alternative to close it. We're pleased with the decision that the board has made about Wes, that it's part of the whole facilities conversation. This is just about a wet, wet fall. And I was in, in Wes on a Saturday morning with Principal Lisa, you know, helping scoop out some of the water in that rooms, down in the boiler room. So I, I hope that addresses it for Board Member Hofarth and for anybody who's watching right now. And we do have a plan going forward. And I don't know, Jody, if you want to talk about the plan, we've got a meeting next week with parents. If you'd like to take that piece, thank you.
So I'll give you a little background on the alternate site work that we've been doing. So Cabinet identified probably 10 possible sites to relocate Wes, depending on what the board decides this afternoon. And so out of those 10 sites, through either phone conversations with pastors or priests, we kind of narrowed that down to three preferred sites. We had a district group that actually visited two of the sites today, one will be tomorrow. We had B and G represented, technology, child nutrition, Encore, which is our after-school program that's at Wes. Our special ed director was present. And then Lisa Diderich, obviously the principal at Wes, was involved in those two site visits. I will tell you this, that even the sites that weren't acceptable, the church leadership has just been really welcoming. They're excited to potentially have a school in their setting. And that's just not the, the leadership, but also the staff as well are excited to host a school if that's what we determine. So we'll visit the other site tomorrow and then we'll probably come up with a preferred site. So obviously, we're looking for classroom space. We want that classroom space to be in close proximity. We don't want kids scattered all over a church. We want to be able to have some lunchroom and kitchen space. We probably won't have a gym space because none of these three have that, but at least a space for some PE activities to take place. Potentially relocating the library, having access to a music room, some small group rooms. Obviously, we need a school office space. We need access to the internet. We need some accessibility and we need a secure building that has an entry that could be used by our Wes parents. So I think the next step is we'll look at the last site tomorrow. We'll visit with that team. We'll determine what the optimal site is. And then obviously, the church council with whatever site we determine is the best option, would have to approve that, we'd have to work out some sort of a lease agreement and then work on a timeline of when we would move students and staff into that building. So we've got a lot of details to work out. Dr. Brenner mentioned, we have a meeting with Wes parents next Thursday. So we'll try to work through some of those details and have a plan ready by the time we get to them next week. Be glad to answer any questions you have about that part of the process.
Well, to quote Yogi Bear, it's déjà vu all over again. You know, I, I think back, and a lot of you probably weren't even born yet, but with the flood of 97, I mean, we were in, we were, we were in churches. We were, we were, we, 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 we had to do that. So it's, it's déjà vu all over again. My question for you, Chris, is, is I'm sure you've looked at the alternatives of, of how to do this. And you've come up with the best alternative is to actually evacuate the school. What would it entail if you tried to keep the students in that school and do, and do the mitigation while, while the students are in there? And would there be dangers in, in doing that if, if, if we didn't, if we didn't pull the, the students and the staff out of that school?
Yeah, so the, obviously disturbing mold is actually worse than just having mold period because it's just like anything, it becomes airborne and it, it becomes something you can inhale. And then that obviously will induce all sorts of asthma problems and, and a host of other issues. Wes in particular is an interesting study in the fact that we have steam lines downstairs that are very old, as you all are aware, and are very brittle. And unfortunately, the steam tunnel, if I opened that for you today, it feels like a sauna of about 140 degrees down there. I don't want anybody working down in that because if we have a steam leak, that potentially could burn them. And obviously, the heat could obviously hurt them as well. So we will have to shut down the heating system at that school, which will effectively cool the entire building down. We're going to have to bring in supplement heat during that period in order to allow those guys to complete their work in that area. And then it'll take us some time, obviously, to reassess the heating system to make sure it wasn't damaged during the repair. The library, I don't know what I'm going to find in that wall. It, it could, I really hope it's just one window. I have, I have a really disheartening feeling that it could be an entire wall that needs to come out. If that answers all of the.
Can I just go ahead and make a motion that we have a declaration of emergency situation for the mold remediation for all schools?
From a budget standpoint, where will the money come from? Scott will find it. That's our finance committee meeting after, after this meeting.
So how much are each of the reports? Like how much, each school varies, I suppose, because it's, can you give a variation? Or like, like an, not an average, but maybe the range of cost for just the report alone?
Yeah, it's, they've been coming in right around 1,500 to, I think our high is 2,000? What's that? Oh, 3,000. Now, that's just for the report. We have one return on remediation and that is for, well, we've already started some of it. Those have been coming in anywhere from 3,000 to 7,000, roughly a school. And I think the newest one we got was just a little less than 2,000. Complete removal, we got that for Century, that came in at north of 40,000. That's just to remove the moldy pipe.
So that's, so that's another question that I have. Like, how big do we go? I mean, how, how large do we let it go before we say, this is not acceptable? I mean, so I'm just going to say, kind of like what Jackie was saying. When I was doing the public forum and I really appreciated the people that were in the room, there were several who were not pleased with the board for keeping Wes open. And so, you know, I can take that comment and I, I sincerely appreciate that comment. How far do we go with the cost of this before, I mean, how do we make that decision? Because if you go in there, like, the, the last thing you just said was you're, you're disheartened because you're not sure how much we're going to find. I mean, you, you don't know. But do we need to have some kind of limit to how much we spend? If it was what, did you say?
It was $40,000 just that Century alone.
And you know, I know the comment is, well, it's just 40,000 compared to the big budget that we have.
That's just one school of six.
That's just one school. And you're not even done with all of, you're doing mold reports for all school after this, correct?
No, we, we did focus our effort because of the cost of the mold reports. We really focused on the schools that got wet. So we didn't do one at either of the high schools or their, or at community, I should say. So those two buildings, we didn't experience any water issues with. Discovery Elementary is a slab on grade. We didn't have any moisture issues at that building. South and Phoenix, again, those are slab on grades. We didn't have any issues at, at any of those sites. So we avoided those. But basically, anybody that had a crawl space, Garden View, we had any inclination of water. We had him go to Lake Agassiz and actually went through all of the tunnels and he didn't find anything, which is great. It was a win for us. We got one good one.
It gets back to my question, how, how, so that's good. I'm really glad to hear that. But how much do we, how big are we going to let this go before we? I mean, I, I was part of the decision to keep it open, but I, I, I mean, you have to be responsible fiscally and also I, I find that, you know, health is very important. And if the health of the building is so hard to keep maintained, I, I just think we need to have some kind of conversation about that.
Why don't I go ahead and comment on that? We, we won't know really till we get, get into the buildings to find out the extent of the work. But we'll, we'll certainly bring that number back to the board so you have an idea of what, what this is going to cost. And, and I think it's important, you know, the, the board has made a decision and a commitment to Wes to keep it open. So we, we should fund that building as, as if we're keeping it open and fix it as if we're keeping it open. And then we'll see what comes out of the task force and the community engagement process. But the school is ours, the school is here. And we'd like to move forward.
So I guess a question, which is the most expensive portion of it? The remediation or the revamping afterwards, after you've got the mold out of there?
I don't have those numbers for re-insulation, but I would suspect those numbers will match, if not be more, because now we're paying for material on top of labor.
And, and basically, whether we decided that, hey, we don't want to use that building anymore, we've got to take care of the mold.
Right.
No matter what. It's just, it's the second half. So we can go through the first step.
Yep.
And then find out what the second step.
That's a great approach, yep.
How much were the mold, how much was the mold testing?
Yeah, like I said, it ranged anywhere from like $1,500 all the way up to 3,000. Depending, it really depended on how many tests we had them do. So obviously, a bigger building like Schrader and Valley, we had lots of tests done because we have lots of, lots and lots of crawl spaces.
Okay, sorry, you might have addressed that when I was gone and you might have also addressed this. Will all of the books in the library need to be cleaned, trashed, something? And how, what is the plan for ensuring that that school has access to the same number of books for the next year?
Yep, so we've actually already kind of got that plan together. The books are kind of sandwiched together, thankfully. So now we just have the top splines we got to worry about. So in talking with Stematic, their approach to that is simply to do a wipe with a little bit of, basically like a Clorox wipe with some, you know, something bleach to make sure we get any kind of mold spores off the top of the books. But they feel pretty confident that those books will be able to go out and, and not have any issues. They've, they've done this many times.
So it's not like they have to go page by page to, okay.
No, they will just do the tops of the books where the, where the debris, where the mold spores would land.
I worry a little bit about, I, I understand you have to come back with, with cost estimates and stuff, but, but sometimes that can slip into operations and we're not an operational board. And so I don't particularly want to hear that if we have to spend $6,000 at Lewis and Clark. Now, if you have to spend 400,000 at something, I think that's important. But I, I don't think we want to get into the, the, the action where we have to approve every little thing that you're doing. I think, you know, some of this is ongoing maintenance that you need to do. I just don't think we should have to approve every, everything. But I think if there's a significant expense, yeah, then it's got to, then it's got to come back to this board. But I think to, to have us approve every little thing about, about this, I think, is, is beyond what we should be doing. And if you really don't want to sleep at night, we should all go home and have our houses tested because I can tell you mold is not just in schools. Jeanne and I and Scott can talk to you about the horror stories that alter your health system through the years with, and, and it all gets around to water. So if you can get it dry and keep it dry, you're good with, when it comes to that, so.
That's our struggle right there.
Was radon testing a part of any of this or is there a plan for that? I know that's a separate issue, but I also know with basements and.
That is coming in March.
Okay.
Along with lead testing and water as well.
I just want to say thanks for being proactive. Because I think that we can focus on the disappointment of everything. But honestly, if, if you weren't proactive about some of these pieces, we could be having a different conversation because somebody gets sick or because there's something more dangerous down the road. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
We do have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Pose, motion carries. Thanks, Chris. That's it? Any comments from any board members anymore? We are adjourned.